The Aspen Room at the Stanley. Mayor Bill Baird will present his sixth day of the city address at a luncheon hosted by the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce. The event begins at 11:00 a.m. with the mayor's address scheduled to start at noon. The state of the city is open to the public. For those wishing to purchase lunch, tickets are $25. Find a link to register on the city's website. The state of the city address will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and available at cityofls.net. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night at six in council chambers and city hall. If you can't watch, quickly catch up on city council meetings by subscribing to the council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Join District One Council members Mia Prior and Hillary Shields for a town hall on August 30th from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Receive an update on major projects and visit with department representatives. This town hall is a come and go event. Unable to attend? The meeting will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. And pooch paddle is coming up. Does your dog love to make a splash? Bring your four-legged friend to Summit Waves on August 21st from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Find more information at ls parks.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Have you ever been driving around Lee Summit and wondered what's that going to be? What's being built there? Wow, that went up fast. The Development Minute is here to help, highlighting some of the newest projects in Lee Summit, Missouri. The Lee Summit Transfer Facility located at the Resource Recovery Park in South Lee Summit is a Missouri Department of Natural Resources regulated facility, providing a location for contractors and developers to recycle debris. The facility, which offers equipment only found in two other facilities in the U.S., will break down recyclables like rebar, concrete, and more. Existing city services will continue at the Resource Recovery Park. Rain Tree Village, a senior living community, is being developed off of Highway 158 Arborwalk. The three-phase project on 12 acres will offer independent and assisted living, short-term rehab, and long-term care for residents. The 150,000-square-foot facility will have 126 residential units, 60 memory care units, and 80 to 100 staff members. It is set to open in 2024. New Longview is getting apothecary wines and spirits. The wine, beer, and spirit store will offer local, classic, and rare vintages and libations. Opening date coming soon. Smoothie King is coming to 1440 Northeast Douglas Street, south of St. Luke's East Hospital. The smoothie company focuses on using whole fruits, vegetables, and healthy ingredients in all its blends. The store is set to open on Tuesday, September 12. Summer Moon Coffee is opening its first Missouri location in Lee Summit at Summit Fair Shopping Center on Saturday, August 12. The coffee shop uses a wood fire coffee roasting process that offers a different flavor profile than air roasting. The Lee Summit location features a drive-through, online order ahead, and outdoor seating. That's it for the Development Minute. For more about upcoming projects, visit cityofls.net.
Lee Summit is your destination for big-city vibes and small-town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market, where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally-owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crises. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them on, say, 982, then route.
Officers en route, 914. Armored vehicle.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as the co responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago on my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, and getting to know, who comes around and sees you? Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Lee Summit has you covered for all of your summer fun. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market, where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally-owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Summer at the Summit, Lee Summit, Missouri.
It's Member Lovell. Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, Ryan. Thank you. Is there any indicator that shows, are we supporting a need with...
You know, they talk about like gym rats, kids that grew up with their dads that were coaches. Like, I was a city hall rat. My dad, Tom Lovell, was hired as the Parks Administrator in 1978 and spent 40 years in public service here in Lee Summit. I would go up on the weekends when he was working, and I'd run around and play and do things. And I didn't know what he was doing at the time, but I just knew that was part of our weekend routine some days, was to go up and hang out at city hall. Being part of a city from a young age to now in my adult life, you reap so many benefits from that. The people you know, you care more for something that you've been a part of. My wife and I knew we wanted to raise a family, just trying to find a community that we thought we could raise our children in that was good to me. And it just felt like the right move as we were deciding on a city to come back to. Fortunate to have started a business in 2018. I founded Lovell Insurance Group, and we are a business insurance brokerage. So we help businesses procure insurance. Decided to throw our flag in the ground here in Lee Summit, and it's grown. I also have this passion for learning and curiosity, and I started a podcast series. So I really enjoy this opportunity where I sit down with business owners and tell their story. And get this out to other people in hopes that maybe it better their life and gives them some inspirations. This is going to be a really exciting time. Obviously, this city is my blood. My dad's been a part of it for a long time, so I'm really excited. Thank you all. A lot of people would say I was crazy, right? So why, you know, why do you throw...
Welcome, everybody. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to come together and work together. We ask for your inspiration and insights. We ask for your direction and guidance. We ask for peace and harmony. May we accomplish great things this day, and may we display an attitude of cooperation and respect. Amen.
United States of America, public for which it stands.
All right, welcome again. I'm going to call to order right now the City Police Summit Regular Session Number 46. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember DeMauro.
Here.
Councilmember Prior.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges. Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Member Shields.
Here.
Mayor Prochem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. Okay, I need to do a little agenda management before I do the approval of the agenda. I just need to pull the first reading. No. Where's that? What is it? 7F. Yes, thank you. Proposed ordinances. We need to make some tweaks on Agenda Item 7F, Bill Number 23-159. We're going to pull that from the agenda, and it's going to go back to CEDC tweaks. You have that, Ms. Alora Curry? Okay. Then I would need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Councilmember DeMauro has motioned to adopt the agenda as amended. Councilmember Felker has seconded discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next would be the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes 8-0. Thank you. This is the council roundtable, items of general interest, things going on in the I'll start off by saying I went to the Kaufman Center for the Lee Summit Orchestra. If you remember, I did a proclamation, and it was magnificent. They were phenomenal, and they let me say a few words beforehand, thanking them for being such a phenomenal organization. That's the 20th anniversary, so that was on Sunday, and so that was actually Lee Summit Symphony Day in Lee Summit. It was a wonderful time, though. And they played the organ. Have you ever been in there? The organ is magnificent. It's huge, gigantic. All right, next, Councilmember Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I am unsure if I'm going to be here next week because of school starting on Wednesday, but I, so I wanted to go ahead and mention that Fourth Fridays is August 25th, and I believe that's the last one. And then the Fall Open House will be September 8th and 9th in downtown Lee Summit. Crazy that fall's already so close, but thank you.
Thank you. Nope. All right. Next, we have public comments.
I have not received any public comments.
And takes us right into presentations. Mr. Denning, we've got a presentation on opioid settlement funds. Oh, no, Ms...
It's me, Beth Fisher.
Ms. Fisher. I didn't mess up this time.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council.
And Ms. Morano.
Yes, so Jolie Fisher, the Chief of Litigation, and with me is Beth Morano, the Chief Counsel for Public Safety. And we're here to talk to you tonight about opioids. And if I can get the screen. Thank you so much. So before we start, I wanted to let you know that we have a number of community partners here with us tonight that we are going to introduce at the end of our brief presentation and open it up for questions, if that would be okay with each and every one of you. Let's talk about, first of all, what is opioids and how we got here. There have been a number of lawsuits that were filed because of the addictive nature of opioids and the fact that pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors, in essence, lied to everybody through deceptive marketing and misrepresented the low risk of the addictive nature of opioids. Therefore, we ended up in opioid lawsuits. But before we talk about the lawsuits, let's talk about what are opioids. Think about fentanyl, which is one of the ones that we see on the rise right now. It is made on the black market. You see it used in illicit drugs. And in actuality, they're using it to make counterfeit pills and lacing other illicit drugs with that fentanyl, which is causing a lot of overdoses. In fact, that's the most common drug you find in those overdoses. When we look at history and you look at the opioid crisis, it's not something that started today. In fact, the first epidemic was back in the Civil War. But what we have seen is three waves that have hit since then. Because what happened was people were relying on being told that they're not addictive, so doctors were prescribing them. And then they found out, oh, wait a minute, they are addictive. We have a problem here. So they started reeling it back in. Well, what we saw was in the late 1990s, you ended up with this first wave of deaths related to the opioids. Then when they roll it back, people start getting more illicit drugs. And then we see that second wave, where we have overdoses of heroin starting in 2010. And then those overdoses from opioids starting in 2013. And that's where that emergency is that we currently are experiencing. When you want to talk about how little fentanyl you have to have to overdose, see this penny with this little, little bitty speck? That's how much fentanyl can kill you. And that's what we are seeing in these overdose deaths. It is added to those illicit drugs, and it is being manufactured. When you look at the KC Metro region from 19 to 21, 149% increase in synthetic opioid deaths. Now you fast forward and you look at the patterns that we're seeing here at home, here in Lee Summit. These stats are from the early part of 2022, where we have that spike from 6 to 22 here in our backyard. So now what are we looking at? Well, in 2021, the settlement agreements were finalized, and in December of 2022, Lee Summit got its first payment. We, to date, received a payment just today for $15,182.09. So we have now just a little over $72,000. We are expected to get approximately $419,000. That is from the settlements that have already occurred. However, as many of you may have seen in the news recently, that Purdue settlement with the Sackler family, the Supreme Court has agreed to hear that, and so that's put on hold, so that's not going to go any further. However, the city has opted in to five other settlements with other manufacturers and distributors. Think of Walmart, CVS, and Walgreens. And as additional settlements come in, the city fully intends to opt in to all of those so that we can keep that money here in Lee Summit and utilize it to help people. The one thing that I want everybody to take away is that there is hope. Opioid addiction is treatable.
So I wanted to talk about the Lee Summit Police Department and a program that they created in 2018, which was called Safe Passage. And some of you maybe remember it when you were on the council in earlier years. But this program was to connect people that were ready to go into treatment with treatment. And within the first six months of that program, there were 48 people that availed themselves of Safe Passage. And in the years since, there's probably been about 20 or fewer people that have availed themselves of that program. One of the things in evaluating this program that became very clear as a major challenge was the fact that there was a need to find inpatient beds that were available when a person was ready to go. And that is a challenge that is still present today. As a matter of fact, it can often take up to six to eight weeks for an inpatient bed to become available. And that's a long time for someone to wait who is ready to go into treatment. So now, with these national opioid settlement funds, we have the ability to help with this problem. And so that is where we are looking to put our resources. And what you see here is thanks to our efforts at Creative Services, our Creative Services team, they have come with a new branding for Safe Passage. And what we want to do is we want to start spreading the word again about this program, that it exists and that we have some more funding so that we can help people seek treatment when they're ready to go. This is the model that describes how a person works through the Safe Passage program. From the very start, which is Intercept Zero, when a person is ready to go into treatment and they're ready to come to the police department, through the finish line, which is Intercept Five, when they are able to be in recovery and have self-sufficiency. Intercept Zero is really setting up a situation where a program is ready to go into treatment, and they voluntarily want to go into treatment. And they contact the police department. The slide shows different ways that they can contact the police department. And the thing about this is that that person who contacts the police department does not have to be afraid of being arrested or prosecuted for being in possession of illegal substances. Intercept One is the Safe Passage program. It's the contact that that individual has with a police officer or with a co responder that's housed at the police station. And basically, it's an opportunity to make contact, take some basic information, to figure out how to get this person to the right type of treatment. And then we have created partnerships and developed programs that offer inpatient services to people through Safe Passage. And the first one I wanted to highlight was our partnership with American Addiction Centers. This is a place where people that have insurance or that may be able to qualify for insurance can go. They have treatment centers throughout the United States, and when contact is made with an American Addiction Center, they are going to work to get that person to one of their treatment centers, hopefully within that day. If someone doesn't have insurance, we have Heartland Center for Behavioral Change. And that is a place that provides a residence and offers treatment within the metro area for the uninsured. And we also have, through Rediscover, KCATC, which is a 24-hour triage center. And if we have a need of someone in crisis, it's a crisis center, we can send somebody there, and they can help stabilize that person and move them on to the next place. And especially if someone comes to us in the middle of the night, that's a place where we can take somebody and then the next day, get them transported over to Heartland Center for Behavioral Health. And then, once someone starts treatment, we don't want to lose track of them, too. We want to be involved in their ability to succeed. And what professionals and our providers have suggested for us is that we need to have that connection going so that we can ensure in Intercept Three, there's a transition meeting. And that transition meeting will be so that inpatient providers can talk with outpatient providers about their clients that are getting ready to come back to the community, to come back to Lee Summit, and to figure out what their needs are going to be and make sure that they are signed up and connected with services. And what we know is that having people enrolled in services before they are discharged from inpatient treatment will lead to higher rates of success. Intercept Four is the outpatient services. And we have many outpatient services that we can provide with the city and provide with our partners in the community with Lee Summit. Here's a list of some of the services that we have and future connections that we want to continue to make so that when somebody comes back out of treatment, we can help them address their needs, whether it is outpatient treatment, whether it is housing, whether it is job-seeking skills, having peer support specialists. That's what the outpatient side will do. We also are meeting that final goal of hitting Intercept Five, the finish line, where a person is reaching self-sufficiency and recovery, with the knowledge that we are here with the community to provide long-term support for them when it's needed. We're also looking at how Safe Passage can be expanded and, of course, evaluated. And one of the things that we know we need to do is we need to be able to evaluate the number of people that are going to be using the Safe Passage program and see if we can keep up with the demand. We also would like, our fire department would like to develop a community paramedic program. And right now, they have to figure out a funding stream for that. But when they do, there's two different intercepts that they can... But when they do, there's two different intercepts that they can interact with Safe Passage at. At Intercept Zero, the fire department can be an entry point for people when people maybe do not really want to go to the police department. They can also interact at Intercept Four in outpatient services because community paramedics can check on people that are coming back into our community and making sure that their basic health needs are being met. We also would like to train every city employee on how to make a referral to Safe Passage. So it's just not, it's just not the people in the police department or the fire department that know about Safe Passage, but that we all know about Safe Passage and we can all provide access for people to get a referral. And we want to develop an education and awareness program for the citizens of Lee Summit so that they can understand this opioid crisis and how serious it is. What you're going to see, starting next month, is the promotion for Safe Passage. And you're going to be seeing posters, you're going to be seeing business cards, you're going to be seeing billboards. We're going to be putting QR codes on there so people can access that information in an easy way. And we hope to really, really be able to get the word out.
So now we come in with the hard work from all of our community partners, and I'd like to introduce some of them. With the Lee Summit Police Department, we have Chief Travis Forbes. We also have our Crisis Intervention Team Coordinator Officer Michael Iceberg. With Lee Summit Fire Department, we have Deputy Chief Brian Osterman and Assistant Fire Chief Dave York. And with Heartland Center for Behavioral Change, we have Kyle Mead, who's the president and CEO. We have Casey Sparts, who's the Vice President of Behavioral Health Services. And with Rediscover Mental Health, we have Angela Mans, who is the Vice President of Wellness and Recovery. And Lucas Taylor, the Clinical Director of KCATC. We welcome any questions that you have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Edson, start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to all of you for your hard work. I remember when you all applied for grant funding to start this project. And honestly, I think it's probably the best-kept secret in town, and you don't want this to be a secret. So I'm really glad that you were able to secure this funding to expand it and really promote this program because I think you'll be able to do so much good with it that you already have. So thank you very much for all your hard work, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Demoral.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to say about the same thing that Councilmember Edson said, but thank you. Thank you for, you know, helping with this problem. And I know, I know this problem is a lot larger than we even know. I mean, there are people out there that, that, that probably have thought about help. And by broadcasting more about Safe Passage, I think it will hit a different, or more, more people. And because, you know, the way I feel that one addict actually has a family or friends behind him, they're also affected, even though they're not addicted to a substance abuse problem, it affects a lot of people. And, and, you know, I'm especially encouraged that, that we're getting the money, more money. And by the way, how is that money allocated per municipalities or states or?
So the cities that opted in get a certain percentage based on what their state gets, based on population. So it's, it's a computation that's too complicated for me. That's why I went to law school. And so, but, but it is, it's based on those that opted in. There are some municipalities in the state of Missouri that opted to just turn their money over to the state and let the state do what was best. And Lee Summit thought we were the best suited to decide what was best for our citizens.
I agree. I agree for that too. But thank you all. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you for the presentation and you folks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So I don't really have anything new to say. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the work that you put into this. And then I also, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to mention it, but I know a couple of weeks ago, I saw that you can get Narcan, which is used for fentanyl overdoses a lot. But you can get a free Narcan kit through Jackson County Public Health, which their office, I believe, is in Lee Summit now off Ralph Powell. So I just wanted to mention that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo what my other council members said. I really appreciate the work that all of you do. My mom has been an LCSW mental health and drug abuse counselor for many, many years. And I know that it is challenging work, but very, very important. I am sort of curious, one of the things that was in the presentation was about the availability of beds, how that maybe needs to be expanded. Right now, if someone comes to the Safe Passage program, are there usually enough beds available to get them in right away? Or is that in a really immediate need that it's not being available?
But that's a twofold answer. The first one is, if Casey could stand up for me, we have created a partnership with HCBC to where Lee Summit is contracting to have one bed available for our citizens at all times. And they are not going to turn that away. So I'm going to let Casey respond to that, and then I'd like Rediscover to.
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, Heartland has made itself available to basically treat those that are in a state of crisis. And collaborating with Rediscover, we have excelled in allowing ourselves to have beds available for those individuals when they need it. And that's what this program is all about. It's when someone has that need, we're available to provide that support. Up to this point, without the current funding, we've been able to help with the Safe Passages program and provide beds on the same day on multiple accounts up to this point. So this funding will allow us to have a secured contract to enable that to move forward in a, in a, in a way that's going to help more, in a way that is going to be stable and consistent.
And with those beds, is that usually, is it, is it more of just a, for acute needs or are there like, you know, a 30-day or some kind of longer stay inpatient treatment program, which, which is kind of?
Yeah, so the treatment that comes along with it is individualized to that person. So it's based on what that person needs to be successful. So there's not an actual date range that they're going to be there. Like, on average, it's about 26 days that someone would stay there and receive individual counseling, group counseling, group education, case management, the list kind of goes on, peer support and medications. Could probably go on with all the different things that are offered there, but it's, it's all tailored to what that person needs. And then that transition out as well. So that's just as crucial as them going into services. Them returning to the same location, the same situation isn't necessarily going to be what's best for that individual. And so being able to make sure we're wrapping around that full process is, that's kind of the goal in how services would wrap around that individual need.
Thank you so much. Well, I'm, I'm really glad that we're able to dedicate funds to this. And I, I hope that from time to time, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'd love to hear updates about how the program is going and if the resources are adequate and that kind of thing. So I think it's a really, really important for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. Is this something that you're partnered with, like, our local hospitals too, that they can send people? Or how does that work if someone goes to one of our local ERs?
Yes, once we're set up, we will go to the hospitals. We'll make sure the ERs know that they can refer. Right now, it's set up to refer through the police department. So we're that sort of transition point to get them down to wherever they need to go. But yes, we'll be working with the ERs.
Good, thank you.
And I can speak to the emergency room piece. So I am the Director of the Crisis Center at 12th and Prospect in Kansas City. And our program exists to be diversion from hospitals. So we have registered nurses and behavioral health professionals on site 24 hours a day. We want to be the place where people who are intoxicated can come and sober. We don't offer medical detox. It's a slightly higher level of care. But for the vast majority of individuals seeking services voluntarily, they can receive those comfort medications and services immediately while intoxicated, where those who really need hospital level of care can be screened. And that's the triage part of KCATC. We can elevate those to hospital, but that's such a tiny minority of the people that we serve, we want to be able to provide services on site, help them stabilize that acute crisis, and then be able to connect directly to Heartland for those ongoing services that they might need.
That's good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Level.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, obviously, this is, I mean, you know, you could turn on the news and see the, you know, many cities across the country that are struggling with addiction. And some of the mechanisms or ways that they've tried to tackle that problem don't seem to be working. But what I really appreciate about this, especially is Intercept Four, is the belief in the individual that we can help you immediately in your time of crisis, but there is a path to rehabilitation and services there to reintegrate you into work or housing or whatever that may be. And it's, and it's, it's sometimes that sense of hope and belief that allows someone to get on their feet versus some of the other ways we've seen other cities try to treat this. So I do appreciate that. And thank you guys for your work and appreciate all your efforts in putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of the comments I wanted to make have been made and well-stated. Just thank you all for, for the extra attention and emphasis on all this and the coordination. Kind of like Councilmember Level said, I think this model, you know, with all the issues we have in society, all the other mental health issues, just this model seems so put together and so intentional that, you know, I don't know what other ways we can address other type of mental health kind of challenges. But gosh, this model seems like it's just really well-thought-out. So commend you all for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just ask a couple of questions or at least one. So we opted in. Can you just describe, everybody, how that happened? Because I'm pretty sure Mr. Head brought this to us. Is that correct?
Yes. And I don't know if Mr. Head wants to address that since he was the one that did it.
Several years ago, we had some discussions with the council about whether or not to opt into these lawsuits. There were a number of law firms that were, that were sort of out there. And we did choose to opt into these. Now, I don't think we had an opportunity at that time to opt into all of these lawsuits. So we, there were some that the settlements came along and we had the opportunity either just to opt in and get the settlement or try to come up with a lawsuit. We chose to opt into those as well. So some of them we opted in early on and some of them we opted in later, once the settlements were complete.
And then you had mentioned that we could have decided to take, put the funds elsewhere, like at the county level? Or was that part of the opt-in? Or was that, is that part of opting in? Or is that, can you explain the difference?
Sure. So what happened was after everybody opted in and the statistics were calculated as who was getting what percentages, some municipalities decided they were going to give theirs back to the state of Missouri, to the Attorney General's Fund for this. And so at that point, Lee Summit was discussing, we really want to keep ours here so that we can help our citizens and have the greater impact. So when the AG's office approached us about, hey, you can just give us your money, we said, thank you very much, but we're going to keep it here. So.
So my point was that it's because we have a lot of confidence in our community partners, all of you, and our police and fire departments and, and of course, our, our legal team, that we, that we're able to do these things. So thank you for that because I do work with a lot of the other mayors. And I know a lot of times I've seen them simply say, we're not going to, we can't, we can't administrate these funds. We can't effectively use these dollars. We'll just have to give it, you know, give it elsewhere, back to the state or to another jurisdiction. So I'm really thankful that we have you all as well. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Any final comments? Mr. Dunning?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to share, kind of to your point, very appreciative of the team that, that thought through, how might we as a community best utilize these funds? And the partners that played a role in this and the confidence that we have in them to think across the board, how could we best utilize the funding? What, what really wasn't touched on too is just education and awareness programs that, that are underpinning some of these programs as well through, take our impact or their program, right? And, and putting efforts in place to create awareness and education on, on these avenues as well. So in many ways, I can, I feel, I truly feel that we're leading the way with the Safe Passage program and, and what we can utilize this funding for. And I'm, I can, I think I can honestly say that because I've heard from other eastern Jackson County city managers, they're still considering how to best utilize their funding and where to put those resources. So we're, we're way ahead of the game and it's due to this, these efforts of the folks you're seeing here today. And so can't, can't thank them enough.
Yep, love it. All right, well, thank you. Great presentation and thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Yep.
Thanks.
We are going to continue with presentations. No, we're going to move next to resolutions. Oh, there is a bill number. Thank you. Yeah. Two weeks in a row, I've just. Yeah, 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 yeah. Who gets the honor? Councilmember Demoral gets the honor of reading bill number 23-153, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, bill number 23-153, an ordinance approving amendment number two to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, as adopted by ordinance number 9704, ordinance 9705, ordinance 97706, ordinance number 9707, and ordinance number 9708 by amending the authorized expenditures of the opioid, opioid settlement funds for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah. We have a motion to advance the second reading, bill number 23-153 by Councilmember Demoral, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it is, it moves to second reading unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you all again. Okay, next is a resolution in support of an application. I will let the city clerk read that for us, please.
Resolution number 23-22, a resolution in support of the Lee Summit Police Department's application for grant funding from the Missouri Highway Safety Program for Traffic Enforcement.
Good. We've got a motion to adopt resolution number 23-22 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes 8-0. Thank you all. Resolution number 23-23, would you read that one for Ms. Fowler or Curry?
Resolution number 23-23, a resolution adopting the city council's schedule of meetings for 2024.
All right. We've got the schedule for next year already. Can you believe that? I have a motion to adopt resolution 23-23, Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. And we will go straight into proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. Councilmember Edson, would you please read bill number 23-154?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading of bill number 23-154, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of an advanced life support utility vehicle for the fire department from ASAP Off-Road Specialty Vehicles, Inc., in the amount of $89,922 and ratifying the city manager's execution of the same for all related and necessary documents.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-154 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously. Thank you. I have a motion to adopt bill number 23-154 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Demoral. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes unanimously. Next is bill number 23-155. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read for a second reading?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading, bill number 23-155, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ 2023-50 for emergency dispatch software in the amount of $179,557 to Medical Priority Consultants, Inc., DBA Priority Dispatch Corp., and ratifying the city manager's execution of the same for all related and necessary documents.
And thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-155 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Mayor Protim Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading. Councilmember Pryor, would you please?
Thank you. I move for adoption, bill number 23-155. Thank you. I move for adoption, bill number 23-155, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ 2023-50 for emergency dispatch software in the amount of $179,557 to Medical Priority Consultants, Inc., DBA Priority Dispatch Corp., and ratifying the city manager's execution of the same for all related and necessary documents.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-155 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number 23-156?
Mayor, I move to advance the second reading, bill number 23-156, an ordinance approving a sole source agreement number 2024-17 for the purchase of license plate reading technology, camera installation, and validation through Flock Group Incorporated, authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
There we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-156 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes eight zero. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
Move for adoption, bill number 23-156, an ordinance approving a sole source agreement number 2024-17 for the purchase of license plate reading technology, camera installation, and validation through Flock Group Incorporated, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-156 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Felker, would you please read bill number 23-157?
Certainly, Mayor. I move for the, to advance the second reading, bill number 23-157, and ordinance approving amendment number one to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, as adopted by ordinance number 9704, ordinance number 9705, ordinance number 9706, ordinance number 9707, and ordinance number 9708 by amending the pay and classification plan for the city and full-time equivalencies for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-157 by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Lovell. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Votes are in. Please record the vote. It moves to second reading. Councilmember Felker, would you please?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of bill number 23-157, and ordinance approving amendment number one to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, as adopted by ordinance number 9704, ordinance number 9705, ordinance number 9706, ordinance number 9707, and ordinance number 9708 by amending the pay and classification plan for the city and full-time equivalencies for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-157 by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Lovell. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 23-158?
Mayor, I move for a second reading, bill number 23-158, an ordinance approving a five-year support and maintenance agreement with Central Square Technologies, LLC for the acquisition of software support and maintenance of the police department's computer-aided dispatch records management system, CAT RMS mobile platform, and WatchGuard integration subscription from Central Square.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-158 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It moves forward to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I now move for adoption of bill number 23-158, an ordinance approving a five-year support and maintenance agreement with Central Square Technologies, LLC for the acquisition of software support and maintenance of the police department's computer-aided dispatch records management system, CAT RMS mobile platform, and WatchGuard integration subscription from Central Square.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-158 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Demora. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And that bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Next would be Mayor Patam Lopez. Please, would you read bill number 23-160?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I move for a second reading of bill number 23-160, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a memorandum, memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the Lee Summit R7 School District for the Impact Program.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-160 by Mayor Patam Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Yes. Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, just a brief comment that I'll be recusing myself for participating in this due to a conflict of interest.
Very good. Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes seven zero with one recusal. Thank you. No, it moves to second reading.
Adoption.
Right? So Mayor Patam Lopez, would you please read for adoption?
Sure. Mayor, I now move for adoption of bill number 23-160, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the Lee Summit R7 School District for the Impact Program.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-160 by Mayor Patam Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Now we go to first reading, proposed ordinances. Councilmember Demora, would you please read bill number 23-161?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number 23-161, an ordinance renewing the city of Lee Summit procedure for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials pursuant to section 2-75 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-161 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And that moves to second reading unanimously. Thank you. And then we go to committee reports. Councilmember Edson.
Yes, we will have a CEDC committee meeting Thursday, this Thursday at 5:00 and we will do it via Zoom. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We got a State of the City on Friday. That's a committee report. It's a heck of a one. How long do you guys want me to talk? There's a lot to talk about. Lovell, are you paying attention? Okay. I'm going to be watching you during the State of the City to make sure you're paying attention. Oh, sweet. You're going to help me. All right. Council comments? Councilmember Shields.
Mayor, there was something on my mind a little bit after a couple of ordinances that we had on the agenda tonight about funding for traffic enforcement and also the license plate readers. And I was wondering if there's any particular initiative that the city is taking to combat fake and expired tags. I see a lot of people with either obscured, missing, fake, expired, temporary tags. And it just amazes me that someone has a tag that's been expired for five years and somehow they're still driving around. So I was just kind of curious about that.
It's a great question. I cannot wait to hear the answer to this one. I've had this conversation in lots of places before.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, Travis Forbes, Chief of Police, I don't have a magic answer for you to make it all go away. They're easily replicated or even printed on printers. I believe the state of Missouri is actually looking at changing the way that temporary licensing is done. That would be a welcome change for law enforcement. I can tell you that. We see the vehicles out there. We pull them over. We seize the tags. We issue tickets. Some folks are pulled over multiple times by different agencies. It's, it's sort of an epidemic of sorts, but the, the tags, quite frankly, are just too easy to replicate and too easy to fake. And so that's, that's part of the issue. I don't believe that's a great answer for you, but.
I mean, at what point or is it possible to impound someone's car? I mean, I understand that sometimes, you know, things happen. They don't make it to the DMV on time. But if someone's driving without now fake tags or something that's been expired for months or years, at what point do the, do, do those consequences escalate?
They can. And, you know, sometimes we find with people who have unlicensed cars, they're unlicensed drivers themselves. So that leads to potential impounding of the car. Every situation's a little bit different. Some cars, we pull over with children in them and we're probably not going to impound the car in those situations. So there's a bit of officer discretion involved. But seizing the tags themselves, at least, you know, we take away that, that copy that they have. So they have to produce another, but it's really a losing battle of sorts because they're just so easy to fake. And it's, it's just become a real prevalent issue. I, I see them all the time myself. Sometimes when I'm in a police car and sometimes when I'm not. So it's frustrating. So I get it.
I understand. It's a difficult issue. I just figured I was in a position to actually ask the question that, you know, people always just asking in your day-to-day life. So.
Well, Chief, it is really tough to, from your, from your side of things to get people to even show up to a court date. Is this, isn't that a part of the problem too?
It's true. It's, and a lot of these tickets are lower-level offenses in the eyes of the court, minor fines.
So people just pay the fine and then move on.
But I, you know, any, as you talk to state officials, as I talk to state officials, encouraging them to change the way that we do temporary licensing would help to where it's not so easy to just get a laser printer and print off your own temp tag.
But don't you, don't you also think COVID exasperated some of this?
There was a, it's, you know, the more it gets in the distance, the, the more you wonder about that. But there was a lot of licensing issues at the time. We're, we're pretty well separated from that now. But I think it, it may have snowballed from that to a degree.
Is there anything that we can do as a city to, to impact this locally? Is there any, like, if, if, is there an ordinance that if it was different, it would be easier for you to enforce? Or is it, is this more of a state-level issue or?
I think it's more of a state-level issue. It's pretty easy for the officers to enforce, you know. There may be situations where citizens see an officer behind a car or two cars behind it. That officer could be en route to a more, a serious call for service. So they're not always going to be pulling over the car that looks like it's right in front of them. But otherwise, it's pretty easy for officers to spot it. They're kind of trained to look at license plates, no matter if they're temporary tags or regular tags, to see if they're expired to, you know, conduct a car stop. So I think they're doing the best they can out there, but it is, it's becoming more of a target-rich environment with the number that we're seeing. That's for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have another question? Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to say, like, I don't understand how Jackson County still has not done more to try to clean up the mess that they've caused. I am still getting emails and hearing about heartbreaking stories all the time and it's just frustrating. So I just wanted to say that.
It's, it's really hard because when you hear firsthand, like, when you have someone that, like, I'll give you an example. I had someone that I trust implicitly. I mean, is that the right word? And they told me about their experience and how they were treated in a combative way at the, at the appeal when it was a walk-in. And he said that it was really crazy because he was so well organized and prepared. And they just, they, they basically said, we don't accept what you're saying. We don't accept your photos. We're looking at comps and go get an appraisal. So that's why he called me, was to say, what appraiser can you get? Which, that costs money. The appraisers are probably so backlog, they can't get them done in a time. And he had a really, really strong case, but he's, he actually was more concerned about the elderly people that were in the room that were making their case that had no really good documentation. And they were getting escorted out the door. I mean, literally escorted out the door, which I, honestly, I'm, I'm, I mean, it's, it's hearsay. It's a, but this is one of my really dear, dear friends that I trust his word. And he just was like, it was, it was not good. And he said they, they, I mean, it was, it was like, you're guilty, you know, without even getting an opportunity to make a case. So I was really concerned when I heard this from him because that's what we've been talking about from the dais for, for quite some time about the, you know, what about the elderly person that can't? Or the person that just doesn't have a computer. It doesn't have to be an elderly person. Or, you know, or, or, you know, are they really following a process when you, you come in and you feel like they're combative, combative from the moment you walk up? Is that really a fair process? So a lot of questions, a lot of questions. So.
I would.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna, kind of what you just said, but I went in, I had my informal meeting and I went in. The lady was not super nice in the beginning, but then I started talking to her and she got nicer. But I had my comps. I went in with like my folder of pictures and comps and everything. And I asked her if she wanted to see my comps and she said, I don't need to see your comps. I have comps of my own. And she wouldn't even look at my stuff. So I ended up not taking her offer and I'm gonna, I guess, some people, I guess, are going before the entire BOE and some people are going before one person. I don't know what my next step is, but I'm doing that next step. So, yeah, it's frustrating and time-consuming that a lot of people just don't have the time to put into this and it's, it's very time-consuming.
Right.
And then I also wanted to say, so we've been doing a thing as council and trying to order, as you guys know, from local restaurants. And so last week, we had Iron Horse that provided our council meal and it was really good. And this week, we had Roots and it was very good as well. So I just think it's a, like, super important to support local restaurants. And then my shirt is from Casey Swagger, which is also a local Lee Summit company. So, and I'm excited that it's finally Chief sees it again. But, yeah, and then I think you have something about Jackson County. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Demora.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. I have something about Jackson County. And I think you, you said right there that you're concerned. I'm very, very concerned about not only our elderly population that, that is not able to either because of electronics or just know what to do, even, even though, you know, you try to help them. But I'm, I'm concerned and, and I've had a couple of elderly homeowners that are worried about losing their house. And, and that's when it becomes real. I mean, a lot of people, a few people, actually, money is not the, money is not the issue. They could pay for their taxes. It just, it's just the unfairness. But I do have a couple that are actually worried about losing their house. And, you know, that, that is going to be a state, a state of, 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 of just very, very, very bad press about Jackson County and people losing their houses because their, their taxes went up. Pick a number, 20 to 100%. And, and so the realization is that, you know, as, as it was stated, the county doesn't, they're, they're not going to do anything. And it's, it's, it's sad. It really is. And so we'll see, we'll see what transpires. But I'm very concerned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Staff Roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor. We previously mentioned Chipman Road is closed to through traffic for the Chipman Road improvements. So that, that's going to be in place until spring of 2025. We also have another east, major east-west road that begins with a C in Colburn Road that will be closed to through traffic. That'll be starting September 5th. So that'll be closed between the roundabout at Blue Parkway, all the way over to Douglas, Lee Summit Road, beginning September 5th. Both of those projects are anticipated to be completed in the spring of 2025. So a couple of major roads to be closed. Now, we will, so we've, we already done the awareness to the public on, on Chipman. We'll be following the same suit on Colburn with some signage and information going out, but just advanced awareness. That project will begin and that's exciting to see those improvements coming. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
I had one more thing. Thank you, Mr. Dunning. I believe there was a press release today. Did you see it?
I have not seen the press.
I'm pretty sure the, did you, did you see it? From, I just want council to be aware of it because, now, let's see. Hold on a second. Let me look. of it, because, let's see here, hold on a second. Let me look. Good news. Yeah, that's good news. I have it here that the press release went out this morning with regard to PRI moving land to SLR, which would be suburban land, SLR. What's the R for?
Reserve, Suburban Land Reserve Incorporated.
So, so check that out. Look for it. That is official, and it is a little bit more than what we thought with regard to the amount of land that they're going to release. Yes.
I apologize. Who put out the press release? I mean, where did we search for it at?
I believe Newmark Van...
Newmark Zimmer?
Okay, thank you. So they definitely are putting on the market that north piece, but also a lot of, that will have a lot of commercial activity on it eventually. And then a south piece that will be a lot of single-family eventually. And I will talk about it in the State of the City. So I thought you all would get a heads up on that and check it out. All right. With that said, it is, we're going to adjourn this meeting at 7:03.